This is round three. So I appreciate you all still showing back up after the first two rounds. Jay, did you wait?
All right, Magnus. Here right now. Turner?
Here.
Barry Rios? Hemfling? Okay.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everyone. Nice to be here on an evening after what I thought was a brutally cold weekend, or maybe I'm just tired of winter or something. But it was nice today to see the sun come out and have it be more like unbuttoned coat, rather than coat mid and his hat sort of weather. But it's great to see you. We are in the third round, as your board president said, of four rounds of strategic planning. And we're just gonna see how things go tonight and see how far we get and maybe have a conversation towards the end of the evening about what is left to do. So with that, we're gonna go get started. If you didn't pick them up, there are copies of tonight's presentation as well as the running meeting notes, which you all received by email. And by the way, thank you to your superintendent for a couple of things. First of all, to her and her staff for the snacks and the drinks. And Leslie, for sure, thank you very much for that, for all your help in getting prep. And Josh, as always, with technology, you've been great. And then the second thank you is for the reminder email that went out to everybody to just remind them to be here tonight. So we really appreciate those assists. So we're gonna get started here, and I'm gonna stand over on this side because nobody that needs to see through me that way. Okay, here we go. So we're just gonna review, like we did last time, a little bit about where we are and kinda want your verbal confirmation that Terry and I have not jumped ahead or taken anything out of context, et cetera. So at the end of, or at least at some point during the second meeting last time, we think this is where y'all landed, you all landed, on your vision and mission. Thinking boldly, caring deeply, and advocating courageously, and cultivating curiosity, fostering learning, and nurturing compassion in our fearless thinkers for a better tomorrow. Are we all good on vision and mission? These two statements will be on a board agenda for approval by the board. The board, of course, can always play a little bit with these, but in a situation like yours, where the five board members have been part of the process, we usually believe that they will move forward pretty much as you have drafted them. So any closing thoughts on those before we are set to move those forward to the board? Do you like them? They feel good? I think they're pretty exciting, myself. Great vision and mission. I believe they're complimentary. I believe they, I think they're bold and they're visionary statements, which you hope they would be, but I think they are visionary statements, and they do keep your fearless thinkers.
What happened to the leash up there, yeah?
You were there last time. The leashes. We took that out.
I need a license for these, is what I hear.
All right. Where's the dog collar? All right.
I think he muzzled.
Core values. Core values. We talked about these a little bit, and I think, let's see, what was the one that we were still a little bit not sure of? Oh, here. This was supporting or nurturing. At one point, you were having a conversation about which of those two words you liked. We just put them both in for purposes now. I don't know if you like that or you don't. But that's the only change we made in the presentation from the conversation last time. How do you all feel about these seven statements?
I remember we had a conversation about arts, but also after hearing Dr. Holden's presentation about the importance of STEM, and I don't quite see the STEM in there. And I'm wondering if we should include it so that we can use that to support more STEM.
Would you add it here?
That's what I'm trying, I need to think about.
It's in the prioritized list, I think, maybe where we're gonna address goals.
Yes. Okay, got it.
But that's a great comment. What I would say is if we get through this evening where we talk about goals and goal statements, and you all still feel there's something important that's missing, make sure that we have that conversation. You good? Okay. So we talked towards the end of the second meeting last time, after superintendent and treasurer had made presentations to all of you about what critical issues are. And these are just things that can be roadblocks in progress. And we explained what those were, and then we asked you to brainstorm in groups about your ideas about critical issues for Yellow Springs. And I wanna review our list, and then we're gonna start talking about moving those things into key goal areas. So this is really hard for you to see, but it is on the presentation you picked up. This is the list of your critical issues. And Terry and I took all of your votes, the dot voting you do, if you'll recall, and we put them in priority order. They're led by facilities, where 23 of you, you each had six dots to place on the issues you felt were most critical. And 23 of you said that that deserved one of your six dots. STEAM, you'll see here is the third. Pre-K is here. And what I would also say, pre-K is here, and kindergarten readiness is here. So you'll see in critical issues that there are things that are easily blended in terms of your thoughts. But these are the issues, and we usually talk about strategic priorities as being those things that we always kinda take the double-digit things for sure, and then a few more. So none of these things get forgotten. But when we moved forward to prioritizing the critical issues as strategic priorities, and then we're gonna ask you tonight to move them into goal areas. So the strategic priorities become goal buckets. And those goal buckets become your goal areas. They are really the pillars of the strategic plan. And what I will challenge Terry and all of the administrators and staff in Yellow Springs is you never start a program without saying which of our district goals does this directly align to. If it doesn't directly align to a district goal, why are we having this conversation? Now, rarely, the conversation is still important, but nine times out of 10, or 9.5 times out of 10, that's not the case. District goals are what helps the board and the administration keep focused not only on the strategic plan, but the strategic plan is a tool and a picture of what everybody in the community has said need to be the priorities for this district. So that's gonna be some of your work tonight. And then every newer continuing strategy will be aligned to one or more of the district goals. And what's our thinking on what goal buckets reflect our priorities? So before we talk about the strategic priorities, we're gonna talk just a little bit more about goals. So yeah, very broad. We want big labels. Okay? District newsletter is not a goal area. That's a strategy. But we want big, broad buckets for our goal areas. And we want them long-lasting. We want them hard to finish. In districts that have a goal that maybe says, one we often see is maybe a finance-related goal. And the district will label it something like financial resources is the perfect example. And I will say, are you gonna get to the point, three years, four years, five years, seven years from now, where financial resources, you're gonna say, we've done all we need to do there, we're good. We have all the money we need, we have all the programs we need, we're never gonna have to go, you know, go asking for money or grant funds or whatever. And usually, the answer is no. So your goal areas should be areas where you will continue to have work to do. You will complete work within that goal area, and then there will be new things to do within those goal areas. They will align well to all current and future issues. When we get done tonight, I'm gonna take the goal areas that we talked about, and we're gonna go back to that long list of critical issues, and we're gonna make sure that even the ones that got just one vote or just two votes have a home within those broader goal areas. And then they should be easily understood by all. So one of your tasks tonight is gonna be to talk about naming that, a formal name for whatever is that goal bucket. And we want you to give it a name that everybody, whether they are a parent, or a grandparent, or a business owner, or one of you, easily understands what you're talking about. We try not to use edgy speak when we label our goal areas. All right. So these are the heavy-hater critical issues here at Yellow Springs. Starting again with facilities, and we went down to ones that got just two votes. So I'm gonna read them, we'll look at them together, but it's kinda small here. So facilities, pre-K, STEAM, test scores and achievement gaps, college prep skills, attendance and engagement, increasing academic engagement and deep learning, I think is the words that your superintendent used last couple of weeks ago. The need for mental health programs in students and staff, for students and staff. After-school care, consistent and equitable after-school programs. Broadening diversity, inclusion, and accessibility. Long-term financial stability. Social-emotional curriculum and learning. Streamlining the district, community engagement. Serving special needs, IDing needs, capacity. Less reliance on technology and screen time. Kindergarten readiness, more electives, and updating the strategic plan, vision, and mission. So these were the critical issues that most of you thought were the most important. So if we look back here, and you're looking at that list of the most important critical issues, I'd just like to open the floor to you and say, we were gonna try and lump these into three to five buckets. What would those buckets be that these would align well with? Thoughts?
I have a clarifying question.
We don't allow that.
The one that was streamlining the district, I don't remember exactly what that meant, and I'm not sure if anybody could talk about what that was about.
Terry, I think you said something in your presentation. My takeaway from this, and I could be totally wrong, if I'm wrong, please say so, was something was about the whole K-12. Was more like curriculum alignment, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's how I read it. I see some nods.
I think the process was, you know, basically, there's a plan from K to 12, and the process is uniform throughout, the process from elementary to graduation from high school. And making it so that it's a very simplistic plan that still has flexibility, but basically, everybody's on board with the same plan. So certain outcomes in elementary school will transfer to middle school, middle school to high school, things like that. It could be just communication between the teacher-staffs, migration, so what populations are migrating together. That was my understanding of the street process.
So that, and I'm asking this question, so that when students transition from elementary to middle school, there's a common expectation of the skills that they will be bringing with them and how they're ready for that next step?
Well, as well as the experience as well, so that they're not coming into some, you know, from one experience into a totally new one and spending six months to a year adjusting to from elementary school to middle school. The whole big pack is social as well as academic transfer.
Okay.
So it's a curricular piece. I guess, yeah, maybe we could add another word or two in it just later to clarify that it's really about the curriculum.
I put down curriculum, skills, and experience.
Great, thank you.
And, but what I just took away from what Craig was just saying too, is it's almost kinda also a cultural thing. That, you know, and it goes back to your core values. So the core values, we hope, are things that are, become expectations and become embedded at the pre-K-12 experience too, right? And so if one of your core values is that arts are a critical value for K-12 education, that parents can expect that their children are gonna be exposed to arts, whether it's performing, fine arts, whatever, from the time they're a PK student here until they're a senior. Right? Any other questions about these? 'Cause thank you for the question, though. We want everybody to be clear on the definitions. Yeah?
I don't recall the discussion on less reliance on technology and screen time.
Yeah, I think I recall there was a member, and you feel free to speak up, but, okay, go ahead.
I just noticed that a lot of the academics are being taught using computers now, which I think some of that's okay, but I think a balance is important. I feel like the balance is still good, like, it's what my daughter's doing, I like the program so far. But I just, I've seen it in some school districts where it goes way too far one-way. And I do know, just from my own work experience, that a lot of kids are actually even starting to get kind of cross-eyed because they're spending so much time in front of the computer doing work. And so I just feel like a balance of that is really important, and maybe even, you know, making that clear so we don't end up on the other extreme.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I was gonna say, our group kind of agreed with that value. Yeah, Liz was, but it wasn't just her. And I've heard from parents who are concerned about that issue as well, so I don't think it's just a couple of people.
Sure, I think that's a good one. I think there's some research that shows obviously too much screen time, and we start to lose something in terms of social and personal skills. So, okay. Any other questions on what these meant? All right. So again, if we started to talk about three to five goal buckets, and we had to put these in some like areas, what would be a like area for some of these?
Academics.
Academics. So the actual, the learning experience, academics. I would agree with you. And I think if you look at these, there's probably, I didn't count them, how many we've got on this list here, but I would say there's at least half a dozen that would align directly to a bucket that was academics. Okay? What else?
I just wanted to say, in the notes that I've taken, I was making academics, I just called it bold learning, so that we could get into the innovative learning engagement that we have in that. So bold learning, and then I was making, because I was reusing the words that we used before. And then for another bucket, I had deep caring for all of the after-school care, the grown on diversity, and I had a few more that I thought could...
Social-emotional might be there. Community engagement might be there in some ways. So you called it, what did you say again?
I got, so bold learning for academics, and then deep caring for those that we just listed, the after-school care, the social-emotional learning, the community engagement, and so forth. I was still thinking about that.
So caring, or what some districts might sort of refer to is sort of the whole-child type topics, right? Okay? What other thoughts do we have? Yes?
I think the relationship between the school, the school community as students and teachers, with the larger district community, I don't know what to call, I don't know how to say it, but I think that's an important piece.
Yep. I would agree with you. I think, I think community, and just because, you know, labeling is gonna be part of your work tonight, but for a placeholder, you might just call it school slash community for now, to use your words. What else? Anything else?
I mean, I kinda feel like facilities should be a bucket.
Well, it got the most votes, right?
I think it could be a bucket, yeah.
Yep.
I would call it facilities and finances. But that would be my bucket.
Okay, so facilities slash finance. And that would definitely, that could also then be directly and or indirectly aligned to a lot of these things that might be in an academic bucket or a caring-type bucket, but they cost money. Right? So, and what we'll often find is a district will say, when we get to the point where we're actually defining strategies, like, we need a community newsletter, and I keep using that example because it's easy. And I'll say, well, yeah, that could certainly be in a community-slash-school sort of alignment. It could also be in a communications alignment, and it might be, depending on the message, it could be in a learning type of an alignment. So it all, if you start working on strategies that touch more than one of your goal areas, that is not a problem, that's a good thing. Yes?
My vote would be to separate those two things, and I think have both of them as buckets, but I think if we have finance with facilities, we're beginning to conflate some of the facilities' needs that are about education and the academic needs that we're seeing in the district with just a financial bottom line for our district. And to me, those are actually two very important areas, that if we put them together, we may actually restrict our conversation around them and our strategy points around them. If we keep them together, I think that the strategies are gonna get less clear than if we have them as two important buckets.
I think that's a fair comment. So for conversation tonight, for argument's sake, let's carry note, a bucket for facilities and a bucket for financial resources. So is that four right now?
Five. Right now, five. Both learning, deep caring, school, community, facilities, and finance.
Okay. Is there anything else that would be aligned? Okay, let me just say this. If we have those five, is there anything on this list that doesn't have a natural home? Facilities, finance, and I'm not, these aren't official labels, but just for talking purposes. Facilities, finance, learning, academics, caring, and community-slash-school, like relationships. That's five. So the question is, do any of these things, you just pick one. Serving special needs students. Right?
Academy, and deep caring. Yeah.
Electives, obviously. College prep. And that could also be a community. Right? Attendance and engagement, that's academics, it's also community. So I think you've identified five buckets, or is it six? Five. Keep losing track. Five. And have everything aligned. Now, we go back, just for argument's sake, go back to that page, because this is hard to read, of the things that didn't get more than, that didn't get even two votes, that's the right side of your list here. Student transitions, K-12 consistency, that's kinda that alignment thing that we talked about earlier. Resitling, sustainability.
That's a community.
Yeah, it could also be financial, right? Larger task base, financial, could also be community. Housing, outreach and corporate support, more performance space, certainly facilities, right? And could also be community. Retaining open enrollment students. I would say, academics. Early planning for diverse paths and tracking data, that's, that, both probably during the K-12 experience adds after. Consistent academic and behavioral interventions, fundraising, student enrollment, polarization around school and the community, political climate, universal healthcare, staff retention, small population, school pride, norms in communication, and increasing community knowledge about needs in the 21st century. So I think you've named buckets where all of these would probably find themselves a happy home.
I have one other question. The one that is on updating the strategic plan with a vision and mission.
Yeah.
So we're doing that now, we'll need to do it again, but does it sit in one of those buckets, or is that something that we're...
I would put that in a school-community bucket, for sure.
You know, do my policy.
It could be in a finance bucket, but I think, I think this is, this is less a critical issue and more a strategy. But living our strategic plan, that could be a critical issue, but I would align living our strategic plan with our school-slash-community goal area.
Yeah, it would be nice if it could fit something that mentioned, you know, so community and fiscal policy and education kind of touch on there, you know, future. But it's really important to have that very forward look.
Okay. Hold that thought. Hold that thought. I agree with you, and we're gonna get there. Okay. So when you start working, we are going to fill your five placeholder goal areas in on this slide. Okay? So, getting our goals down. We want our goals to have the right titles or labels. We want them easily understood in all Yellow Springs audiences. So what I'm hoping are that you can start thinking now, we're gonna divide into small teams, and we're gonna have five, because for right now, you've got five goal areas. And I'm hoping that we will have at least two people in each of those five. Okay? Some goal areas, I know that like nine of you are gonna wanna be, but we hope that we will have two or three people for each of those five goal bucket areas. Then we wanna draft goal statements that define what would happen or what will look different. That's where we get to our looking to the future, when we make progress toward this goal. All right? So I'm giving you an example. The goal statement is simply one sentence that describes what it will look like when we realize or move close to that goal. It's the gap filler. When we move from where we are right now to where we wanna be with this goal of facilities or having all the money that we need or want in Yellow Springs, what's that gonna look like? The goal statement is a description of the gap that will be filled or the fix that will be made to address critical issues in that whole area. So I'm giving you a statement, because guess what? I felt confident that athletics was not gonna be one that you all would come up with, and so I'm using that just to give you an example to go by. So this is what we're gonna ask you to do in your teams. So here's hypothetical district, Awesome Local Schools. Their critical issues were retaining coaches, inconsistent coaching expectations, not enough opportunities for all students, not enough student participation in athletics. So those were some critical issues on their long list that they lumped into a goal area of athletics. Then they got into their small groups, and they labeled that goal athletic achievement. So in their strategic plan, their pillar will be named athletic achievement. And the goal statement that they wrote, which is what it's gonna look like when they get better at athletic achievement, is Awesome Local Schools recruits and trains high-quality coaches, so that addressed some of this, and trainers to support a broad range of club and varsity sports to allow all students to meet their athletic potential. So it addressed every one of these critical issues in this goal statement. Does that make sense? So what we're gonna ask you to do in small groups is to come up with a label, and that will be, what we hope will be, the proposed label to the Board of Education for that goal area, and a statement. And what we want is a statement that if I am a parent of a fourth grader in Yellow Springs, and I look at that learning bucket, or the caring bucket, or whatever bucket it is, and I'm like, what do they mean by that? This is what they mean by that. All right? So Terry, the first goal area is...
Both learning and academics.
Okay. So let's put that at this first table, okay? Learning and academics. This is the caring, whole-child kind of table. This will be the facilities table. This will be the finance table, and this will be the community-slash-district partnerships, collaboration table. Okay? So choose your weapon or your table, and pick up your stuff, and please move to which one you would like to work on for the balance of our work this evening. What we're gonna do after you draft a label and a statement, we're gonna decide to do that, is we'll come out together in the whole group and show it to you. All right, everybody? I'm glad that everybody's enjoying a snack or a drink.
Probably gonna be sorry about this guy.
Thank you all. So as I wandered around and listened to your conversations, was really enjoying it. So what we're gonna do is talk through these... So what we're going to do is talk through these graphs and see if as a group, we can polish them up unless you all agree at the outset that they are perfect as is. So why don't we start, because we are a school and we care so much about learning. If I could have somebody from that room read your label, which is easy to see, bold learning, and read your statement for us.
Here's the statement. Yellow Springs schools are committed to expanding academic opportunities, strengthening and deepening the teaching and learning experience, including PBL, inquiry-based, experiential learning for each student to flourish on their chosen path beyond graduation.
All right. Thoughts? So reading again. Y S schools are committed to expanding academic opportunities, strengthening and deepening the teaching and learning experience, including PBL, inquiry-based, experiential learning for each student. Excuse me, to flourish on their chosen path beyond graduation. How do we feel about that?
I'd like to give a double word score for flourish.
For flourish?
Yeah.
Twenty-four points! Pardon me? Kindergarten readiness? It doesn't talk about readiness. Is that your comment?
Uh huh.
What we were thinking is that things like pre-K, kindergarten readiness, expansion, STEAM, those would be strategies underneath this statement. That's at least how I understood that they could be like the strategies listed. And we thought expanding academic opportunities was bringing in some of those things, like extra electives and pre-K and other.
But PBL is not a strategy then, because this we named PBL, inquiry-based, experiential learning, which then would be a strategy.
We tried to highlight just a few of the things that we think are unique models in Yellow Springs School District around the teaching and learning that we would like to see continue and strengthen and deepen. So it was just kind of calling out, calling attention to those, but maybe they are also strategies. I don't know.
Well, there's a difference between teaching strategies and goal strategies. And so STEAM probably would have been up here, or maybe can come back up here, but STEAM doesn't fit quite as nicely as PBL, because STEAM is an acronym for science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. It's not, it needs something else to fit up here nicely semantically, but that's kind of the way we were thinking about it.
I, I heard as I walked around groups, a lot of you were asking questions about the specific measurables or the specific activities that would be done. Yes, those are the strategies that will be housed within each goal. So we have that critical issue, which is kindergarten readiness, critical issue. So I would expect within this goal area, that the administrators and staff are going to get together and say, all right, in the area, in the critical issue of pre-K or kindergarten readiness, what are we going to do? You know, what, what, what specific activity or specific new thing or specific enhanced thing are we going to do to deepen and improve the readiness of our kids when they come to kindergarten? And that's a specific strategy within this goal area, whatever that specific thing is.
You know, it could shorten like the PBL and the inquiry phase. I mean, I keep experiential, but you might say active, you know, including active and experiential. Just to clean it up just a little bit.
My, my devil's advocate thing was, this sounds pretty.
Educating?
Educating, educator to me. But the teaching, I love it. I wondered about just saying, deepening the teaching and learning experience for each student, and then finishing with the two firsts. Do you have to have this PBL, inquiry-based, experiential? And maybe you do. Maybe your answer here is, yeah, we need, we need some of that.
There's, there's safety in the experience, but I think readiness is almost a different thing, because it's, it's, it's important, because you want the students to come out feeling ready. You know what I mean? So you can have wonderful learning experiences, but if you don't feel ready, then that's, that's, that's kind of the extra oomph. And you know, that's based with the include, instead of maybe including, you know, figuring out something that kind of makes.
What if it's, to, to your point, and these points about readiness, and, and this doesn't mean this stays or goes, but if it said something like, for each student, something like, to flourish and ensure readiness, or, or that adding word, and I know we might not want to do that. I think it's a great statement. I think it might be a little long and a little, like, are people going to, you know, parents going to look at this and go, what do they mean by inquiry-based?
So I think we.
Yeah, yeah.
You're knocking at the cover of my shirt. So I just have a question. If our audience for this is the broader district, wouldn't it be our job as teachers and educators, for example, during parent-teacher conferences, to explain what inquiry-based, PBL, and all of that stuff is? Because the idea is, we're, we're making these statements because we want people to feel connected and brought into the school, right? We want them to feel like they have something that they're investing, and, and we want that connection. But if we put too many words and we lose the curiosity of it, then, you know, we kind of lose the message.
Yeah. Other thoughts? Yes?
So I think we had already written bold learning, but this may even be re-described as cold teaching and learning. And so while waiting, you know, and I know these will go through revisions, we were very deliberate in putting PBL and inquiry-based and experiential learning, because those are bold, and if we had STEAM up here as, as an option, you know, as another option, you know, what distinguishes us from any other school district? And we felt like those were pretty bold approaches to teach, to teaching and learning. And, you know, shoddy, you're right. What, how do we define them? You know, if we just cleaned it up semantically and said deeper learning experiences, people went, well, it's deeper learning. So I think either way, we're caught a little bit, but that's why we put them on there.
I think, I think adding teaching makes all of that work. Because those are the, maybe not talk about strategies, but they are the actual processes. And so it's not, the, the learning is sort of like the end result, but if you bring in the teaching part, then you're showing, then you're, you're describing the process in order to get to the learning. That's how I see it.
And I think this, each student to flourish on their chosen path, that's, that's really nice, right?
Yep.
We talked a lot, both when we, at the very beginning, we started about visioning. You know, you all talked about the individual student and the fact that, you know, every kid is unique and special. Yes.
You know, she said curiosity, and I kind of want to jump on it. I almost feel like opportunities is hit in the bottom. In fact, it might be good to put it down there. I would love to say committed to expanding academic curiosity. I mean, just think about that. I mean, because it just feels like, all right, I'm engaged if I'm curious. Does that make sense?
It does, except for a lot of the strategies that, that have been identified by the group are about actually expanding opportunities like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm saying is that you kind of cover, the last part of the statement should, you know, cover, you know, should cover those, those opportunities. But I think it's wonderful to kind of like, if you use the word curiosity, it, it, it sounds a little less. Well, it just, it sounds a little more emotionally engaged.
So.
Opportunity is really concrete.
Oh, it's a great word.
We need to do to provide different programming, et cetera, so that's on us, not on the tutor.
If we wanted to short goal, we say something like committed to, because I really like the expanding academic opportunity. I feel like that's so important. I want to say expanding academic opportunity through inclusion of PBL, inquiry-based, experiential, whatever.
I think this, I think this strengthening and deepening, personally, I think that's really strong. Those are sound words. Expanding academic curiosity, I think is interesting, but expanding opportunities, there were a lot of your critical issues that had to do with more, you know? More of this, at least some of this, more of this, like type thing. So I think, I think this addresses the critical issues a little more directly, in my opinion. Committed to expanding academic opportunities, strengthening and deepening the teaching and learning experience. And then, and then the rest. For each student. Beyond graduation.
Yep, I think we have like a parallel construction to, I know that's too nerdy for the, but because it says, you know, Yellow Springs schools are committed to, okay, because now we're making a list, expanding what, between what, academic opportunities? Strengthening what? We didn't put anything.
Yeah, and deepening.
And deepening, so then it's just two, so then we would need an and, because we didn't do a list of three. And I don't know if that gets too wordy or crazy. He showed his hand.
I see what you're saying.
So like, maybe that's where we get the weird wordy feeling, is because it's not grammatically correct.
We, we also just didn't have time to.
Yeah, we didn't.
We had so many conversations.
But that's what this portion of the meeting is. This is not, this is not to be critical to any group. This is getting the whole curve together to make this. Right, right. I don't understand what you're saying about strengthening and deepening the teaching and learning.
But maybe, well, I guess I'm teasing what I'm saying, but maybe the opportunity there is to pull in the curiosity, because we needed like a noun that, or we need to get rid of something. Maybe we could say strengthening curiosity and deepening teaching and learning?
I, I think it's. Yellow Springs schools are committed to expanding academic opportunities and strengthening and deepening the teaching and learning experience. Stop. Through.
Yes.
PBL, inquiry-based. I mean, I think we need some more words. Your experiential learning. For or so, each student, or for each student to flourish on their chosen path.
Send, send change, including the through, and I think you've got it. Because the curiosity fits into the plan of how the, how the student chooses to go.
The idea of strengthening and deepening is to, again, address some of the strategic goals, such as the achievement gap, right? That's like a strengthening thing, but we also want to keep deepening their engagement, right?
Yep. That was a hard one.
And, and I'm just, the English, the English people in the room, this should passion, not be plural. No, each student has one path. Okay, moving on. Somebody from the. Okay, so school and community engagement. She's for me. All right, moving on to the next one. By fostering a culture of connection, we nurture inclusive engagement and community building that is accessible, relevant, and participatory. That's pretty cool. And I like the community building phrase. That's pretty cool. What is, what does everybody else think? Participatory. You want participatory? By fostering a culture of connection, we nurture inclusive engagement and community building that is accessible, relevant, and participatory. Thoughts, changes, corrections?
Is there a word other than nurture?
You have nurture in your core value.
To me, nurture means I, I kind of like support it as it goes along. I, I want to make sure this happens. I don't just want to nurture it. I want to make sure it happens.
Greg has his hand up.
Yeah. I just, I think collaborating or something like that, because, you know, it's, it's two entities working together. It's not, that's how I see it. So by, you know, comfort connection and maybe collaboration.
See, I was going to say, what you said, what you've taken out altogether, and you've said something like, by fostering a culture of connection, engagement is inclusive, or, I don't know, that doesn't work either.
I like what you're saying, Greg, about collaboration.
You know.
I, I, I really.
Or a partnership.
I'm just thinking about nurture, you know?
Support is another word.
What's a better word?
Encourage.
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 Prioritize.
Prioritize.
We were talking about moving foster for nurture and.
Connection and collaboration.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah. Through connection and collab, yeah. Through a culture of connection and collaboration, we foster inclusive engagement and community building.
That's nice. So.
That's better than.
Through, through a culture of connection and collaboration, you said? Yeah. We foster.
Inclusive engagement.
Do you have that, Carrie? Through a culture of connection and collaboration.
Yeah.
Do it! We nurture or foster.
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 To foster. That's where we started.
And community building that is sensible, relevant, and participatory. And I love the exclamation mark. Awesome. All right, we're going to look at these again when we're through all five. Okay, so our buildings people. Buildings people. Somebody want to read that for us loud and proud? Don't say unleash.
Create a safe, comfortable, and accessible learning environment that enables current and future educational excellence.
Yep. Create a safe, comfortable, and accessible learning environment that enables. Current, current, future educational excellence. Enables. An app, are you going to snap or?
Be on the plaque.
You want an award for first time out, like just write.
Yeah, that was, that was our first one, too. You're going to say, you just put that down on paper or like?
So I, I'm wondering about the word comfortable. I like it. I like it. I, I was wondering about modern, but you sort of addressed that with current. You know, you kind of addressed that piece. A safe, comfortable, and accessible learning environment that enables current, future educational excellence. Good. Anybody have any thoughts?
Maybe promotes instead of enables?
Or inspires, or something about.
Promotes instead of enables. Thoughts?
Probably ensures.
Insures? Another word, insurers?
Shouldn't bodies.
Yeah. Insures, enables, promotes, thoughts, favorites? Yes.
I feel like inspires is the word that I was looking for.
Yeah, I like it.
Right? Because I think that, that there are learning environments that are inspirational, and there are learning environments that are not, so I would like ours to be inspiring.
Yeah, I like, I like inspire. I like inspire, but I'm trying to think of buildings inspire. Oh, yeah. Inspire. You all like.
It's not so much.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to have to vote here, okay? I hear, I have four words. I hear inspires, enables, what were the other ones? Insures.
Promote.
One other. Promotes. Inspires, ensures, enables, promotes. Okay, yes. Before we go.
Facilities aren't just the buildings, they're also the, you know, the grounds and, you know, the whole physical aspect of.
Okay.
I just want to throw that in.
Sure, but you didn't want to, you didn't want to label it facilities and grounds, or facilities and.
I was learning.
I'm just thinking it now as you're talking, as we're going. Well, I mean, you know, you know, on one campus. All right, you're not yet on one campus.
No. So you can't really call it the campus.
I, I see learning environment as encompassing inside the classroom, in the whole building, in the whole facility, like, it's the ground, it's the whole environment, right? I think you guys chose the perfect word, the learning environment.
I, I would, I would be okay with inspires, because I do feel like buildings and grounds do inspire. I'm going to, I'm going to want comfortable in there, because I think comfortable implies not just physical comfort, or my kids emotionally comfortable, et cetera. Um, and I think that's, you know, if we go through Maslow's hierarchy, we're not going to learn until we met all of those things, so I.
And I love the accessible word in there.
Yeah. If you're going to, if you want another word in there, welcoming would be all, you know, we haven't used welcoming.
That word, that, just that inspires. That inspires current and future educational excellence. So, we're going to change enables to inspire, a friendly amendment? Yes?
I don't actually like giving the facilities, all of the, it feels a little too much like, too much to be laid on facilities if it's going to inspire educational excellence, or we're just talking about facilities, because, you know, the school community, the teachers. I mean, I have this whole thing that inspires educational excellence, so I think you put that all on facilities.
I don't, I don't take it as just, it's only facilities, but, but I think Julie's point is, is well taken. We've all seen buildings, and maybe not even school buildings.
Well, you know, I think.
They could be inspirational, right?
No, no, I'm not against that. It's odd to generalize this to the school environment, because I think that, you know, that, that place of identity and, uh, it, you know, is that, that's, that's kind of a more general thing, and I think that we, we, we transcend to that level, so if we just say facilities, it's, you know, we achieve something transcendent, we should embrace that, so, you know, that's, uh, so that's, that's a thought.
I think the, the whole point is to create a result, and that's what we're looking for, is a result word at the end.
Right.
So, enables, promotes, inspires, so I think we need to look at it, if the environment is positive, and that's physical as well as the, the emotional result of the facility.
That's where, I, I think any of the four words that we're trying to plug in to replace enables
will work quite honestly to fail.
How do, who, who likes inspires? Clear, clear majority, almost unanimous. So that inspires current and future educational excellence. Where's the black marker? Make sure it's on here. Thank you.
Yeah, consider school environment, because.
I don't think we can change, I, I wouldn't vote to change the label of the goal as facilities, because it got the 23 stickers. I think we want to be clear and direct with that. That would be my preference.
Yeah, this, this definitely, definitely sends a message. Right? But I think the learning environment in the goal statement, you're talking about, you know, the whole space, including the patio, and the courtyard, and all that good stuff. Okay, the fourth one. Financial responsibility group. Okay. One of you needs to read it for me the first time, just to be consistent.
Yeah. Um, financial responsibility, that's our bucket. And then, uh, using today's resources responsibly, planning properly for tomorrow, educating all for understanding.
Thank you. Yes?
Um, when you say educating all there, is that referring also to like, um, the larger community? Because I know there's a lot of interest in the community about how the district is using them.
I was going to say yes, no matter what you said, though.
So then, my next question is, is that obvious, or does it need to be a little more clear? I don't know. What, what, who, who all of it?
I like, it could be clear. Like saying all community members, or something like that, is that your point? Okay.
Are you saying like educating all for understanding, how we're using them, like, for understanding what, I guess?
Stakeholders was a, a word that came up on our table. Get out at the end.
I like that. Yeah. To say all stakeholders?
For, for, yeah, for all.
So, I'm kind of, I'm educating for all, understanding. What else do you need to do for other than understanding? You can just say educating all stakeholders.
We just want, we want the public to understand how the fiscal response, the activities of the district work.
How about, if we call it stakeholders?
And so that, so that was kind of the message we wanted to make sure, is that it's not so much we're just paying the bills or whatever, but we're letting the community or the stakeholders, investors, know how it actually works, so we don't have so much misunderstanding of what comes to dollars and cents and cost of things, that people don't see how the money comes and how it's spent. So that's kind of, just to let you know what that educational part is for.
Also transparency.
Exactly, yeah, try to make it transparent process.
I think it's a really important piece, because, you know, most treasures that I know feel like, they, I mean, they would say to me, I feel like all I do is try to educate our community members about this issue. And yet still, a large majority of the community will say, I have no idea what they're doing with their money. You know, I have no idea what the budget is, I have, you know, whatever. So, um, so I think it's, it's an important thought to include their ego like that, or somehow other. Yes?
I have a question about the first part. I don't know what you mean when you say, I mean, I do responsibly, but I'm, I'm wondering if there was any discussion about using today's resources to support the strategic plan or the academic mission of our schools.
That would be responsible.
Anyone base so broad that basically you plug into anything?
I mean, uh, I, I hear your points. I guess, um.
I, I just think responsibly is one of those words that people can attribute a lot to it. And I think, you know, if, if we're doing this important work in creating a strategic plan, and then, once we have this plan, everything we do is going to be aligned to this plan, and it, and it would be my expectation that finances are aligned to this plan as well. So, I don't know how we would kind of write that, I mean, to me, using our, our finances to support our strategic plan is using our resources responsibly? I'm not really offering any way to say it, I'm just telling you what I think.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, yeah.
So, and I'm just, I'm learning as we have this conversation, but what was peculiar to me was the title being financial, um, I lost it.
Responsibility?
Yeah, because I'm also thinking about human resources, whether they're under the financial or not, they play a role in us being responsible, and us building the capacity of our staff, for example. You know, so that might exist in another bucket, but I'm just thinking, when we think about using today's resources responsibly, they should be financial, but they also should be human, right?
I, I, yeah. I think it's a nice conclusion, and also, I think that when people, if people read this, you know, financial, that might be something that they skip right over, right? But we want people to read this, and also our budget, I mean, the majority of our budget is, is for, is for salaries, so that, that piece is giant margin.
Which is a high.
So, are you, are you, I'm just asking a question. If this had something like district resources, is that more to your question?
No, I think it needs to say financial, because ultimately, we have to have financial accountability. I'm just asking the question, where does human resources and the capacity building of our human folks fit in?
I would say it easily goes there, and it easily goes in teaching.
I love that phrase that she just said, that capacity building would be a great thing to put into that bucket.
Shalia, what if it was, um, if, if the heading was finances, and using today's, um, financial and human resources? I don't know.
Yeah, because we could run out of money, but still be able to build each other up to create an amazing curriculum.
Uh, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't, I'm sorry. If people don't get paid, I'm not sure they'll show up to work. I, I can tell you, if I don't get paid, I'm not showing up to work.
Um, I, what we, what we don't really have here is, we don't really have, I mean, we do say for tomorrow and for understanding, but I, I really feel like, when you said capacity building, that's, to me, the aspirational goal for this.
For financial?
Oh.
Building, building capacity for what?
Well, for leading the, the educational system.
Yeah, but that's.
So, I mean, it's, I mean, financial resources are about, you know, that's one of the main, you know, your financial and human resources are about capacity.
But that, that would be a strategy, I think, under this goal, I think, you know, that.
I mean, I feel like, uh, the one that we reviewed so far is, is this one quite doesn't hit in terms of what are we looking towards? Well, I, I don't know, I, I, I get it, for sure. Like, it says what you mean.
I'm wondering about financial sustainability.
Financial sustainability, instead of financial responsibility as a label, is that?
Yes, that's what I'm wondering, just, you know, the idea of.
What does everybody else, especially if responsibly is here, how does, how does the general public here feel about sustainability?
I think maybe financial resources on the top.
It, it could be as simple as finances.
Yeah, somebody said that, I can tell you this is something good.
Or, it, it could be, I'm going to dump things on their head, it could be resources and using today's, um, financial and human capital responsibly, planning properly for tomorrow, and educating.
I don't like using humans. So that, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, like.
What about managing?
Well, resources is a general term, it's human resources, financial, physical.
Do you like managing humans?
Sometimes.
Why are you writing the numbers?
Managing today's financial and human resources, optimize.
Okay, are we changing the bucket?
I don't, I, I also think that that word responsibly in the statement makes it sound like, it kind of questions whether or not the district is, or did, like, like, it's sort of odd issues to say, it kind of suggests that maybe there were times where. Does anybody else feel that kind of?
I understand what you mean.
I strike that word.
Although, although.
What am I, what? Hey, what if I said using today's resources recklessly? I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, like, I know that, I know what you're saying, it's like, well, did we always do this? Why did, why are we just doing it now?
Continue using.
But if you.
How about this?
How am I supposed to use today's resources?
To support, well, we have a suggestion to support the strategic plans of the district, the strategic goals of the district.
But I have to do that in a responsible manner.
Always.
So, how about this?
That's right, the obligation as a striver.
Well, I mean, how about equitable?
Equitable?
Now, equitable somewhere, no, it's not equitable.
So how about that, optimizing financial and human resources?
I guess I don't understand the connection between the human, I do understand the connection between human resources, but.
I think it's to indicate that we know that, uh, salaries and the cost of staffing for schools with the great quality of teachers that we have is the main expense that we have.
Yeah.
I, I.
But the finance department's not responsible for the human.
Finance has been walking, and so I feel like.
It pays for it, but really decisions on the administration. To do that.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's the harder part for me, is like, combining finances and human resources. You're putting two things in a, in a bucket that are related, but aren't the same.
Well, except, yeah, I, I agree with you, but I would also say that you can have strategies, you could have strategies in this bucket that deal with recruiting and retaining staff.
Right, absolutely.
As well as making sure you end every year in the black.
Yeah, and.
I mean, they're all strategies that are aligned to that goal.
But, yeah, but that's not the goal.
Human resources fit into all of these.
Using the district's resources responsibly to, to support and further the academic mission, the district's missions, I, I mean, I, I think that, then underneath that, you can have, what are our, our resources?
Using today's resources.
She said using district resources.
District resources.
Responsibly.
To support our goals.
To support the mission, I thought.
To support our mission.
To support our mission.
You want, any use on using?
Use, okay.
So at this point, I hear using district, using district resources responsibly, planning properly for tomorrow, educating all for understanding, but somewhere, using district resources to support our mission, is that where that goes?
Yes.
Yes.
Responsibly to support our mission.
I don't think we need properly.
No, all that would be taken out, right? Just have it to the, right?
Oh, planning for tomorrow, you're saying, instead of planning properly for tomorrow?
I mean, planning for tomorrow.
That's fine.
Properly is another word that implies.
Hey, it was really short before, so.
So, and we're taking out this financial and human thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so using district resources responsibly to support our mission, comma, right? Planning for tomorrow, comma, educating all for understanding.
Educating others.
Educating community.
All as favors. All as.
And, and I'm just going to say something here, and you can disagree or disagree or just not, because we've had a million arguments at OSBA about this, but stakeholders is a word that derived from slavery. And so at OSBA, we have quit using the word stake.
How about, how about making this for, for all understanding?
Parties, the community.
And the community.
And you can use stakeholders if you want, a lot of people still use it, but just I'm just. Educating the community for understanding?
Yes.
Educating your staff.
Educating the community to ensure understanding. No?
Educating the community for understand, or, to, I don't like ensure.
Okay.
I can, I can ensure.
This part of it, it is a real action piece, so that, that also could be a strategy. Does it, does it change significantly if we say using district resources responsibly and planning for tomorrow? And then, as one of the strategies, it is being transparent to educate our community about our finances. That way, we're not, um, kind of implying that we know and everybody else doesn't, you know? But it, it, it says we're going to be transparent, and, and as part of our educational outreach as an educational institution, we're going to, we're going to share everything about our finances. So you're saying you don't think this, you don't think you need this educate? That is what I was. So, you could say using district resources responsibly to support our mission and plan, and planning for tomorrow, period?
How about for tomorrow's success or something like that? So, let's leave it hanging for tomorrow.
Something else, right? Planning for a sustainable tomorrow. Using district resources responsibly to support our mission and planning for a sustainable tomorrow.
Well, sustainable success, I think we're.
I like that today, what we took today out.
We could put today in. Did we change using and planning to use and planning?
Yeah, we would, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, because the sustainable success kind of suggests, there's a lot of things that we want to be successful.
I think in the end, what we rolled through here is through a semantic.
You're saying district resources responsibly. To support our mission, planning for a sustainable tomorrow. What, what are we not liking about that?
Well, I'm just saying, planning for sustainable success is kind of like.
But a success could be, could be timed, time bound.
I think sustainable, because frankly, that's what you want the finances to be, is like always available or at least a flow coming. So, I think that if, if it's sustainable, the success will come.
Okay.
That's how I see it.
All right, well, let's try that for now, Terry. I'm sorry, do you have it?
It's on screen.
Good for you. All right, and our fifth and final victim. Deep caring.
I can speak, so, um, deep caring. YSS prioritizes a culture of well-being and safety for all students and staff. YSS supports students' individual development across academic, social, and emotional domains from pre-K to post-secondary decisions. YSS offers equitable and accessible before and after care. So, we have three because we couldn't quite figure out the rest of all the others, so.
Okay.
Aware it's kind of long.
This equitable and accessible before and after care is a strategy.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So, that, that's an easy one. I would say the first two are goal statement oriented things, and I would encourage trying to combine those somehow into one sentence. There's a lot there to process. Um, so the first one is prioritizes a culture of well-being and safety for all students and staff. And the second one is support students' individual development across academic, social, and emotional domains from pre-K to post-secondary decisions.
Well, you could lose, you could just go, you could just dive in and say supporting individual development across academic, social, and emotional domain.
And lose the cultural well-being?
Oh, no, 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 so, um, well-being and safety for all students and staff, supporting individual development across academic, social, and emotional domains for pre-K to post-secondary decisions. So, prioritizing, starting with prioritizing, a culture of well-being and safety for all, do we need students and staff? Can we just say for all?
We wanted to make sure that the staff are not the invisible part of this budget here. It was important.
Okay. For all students and staff, and then, this could be a semicolon or a comma, supporting students' individual development across academic, social, and emotional domains.
Do we need to just keep the students?
So, if this starts with prioritizing, um, it's probably comma. And then, this is supporting.
What's supporting? If we say students and staff, you can say supporting individual development.
Staff could be also be supported by their development as well.
What's the beginning of it? Where we have prioritizing?
Prioritizing a culture of well-being and safety for all students and staff. Supporting individual development.
So, we need, we're missing something.
We're missing a subject.
So, Yellow Springs Schools, or is it prioritizing a culture of well-being and safety for all students and staff?
I think it starts with prioritizing.
Okay, so prioritizing.
We prioritize.
We need a we or we need a Yellow Springs Schools, or we could start with prioritizing and then say, comma, Yellow Springs Schools supports individual development. There's just something missing in it.
Probably at YSS. YSS prioritizes a culture of well-being. That's what it is.
Right.
Someone to be prioritizing.
Well, I think if, if you start with prioritizing, the inferred is by. So, it's by.
But not, and I guess I'm just one, and so maybe this is in later cleanup, so tell me, sit down.
Prioritizing a culture of well-being and safety for all students and staff, Yellow Springs Schools supports individual development across academic, social, and emotional domains for pre-K to post-secondary decisions.
Okay, we feel comfortable putting pre-K in now? We got twenty, we got twenty, uh, four stars on dots.
Well, in any way, we, we do technically have a pre-K program anyway, so it's still okay. I had something, I had a question. One of the things I liked best about Yellow Springs is the way that this school has taught my children to be kind to their peers. Not that just that everybody is kind to them, they absolutely are, but they have instilled in them a, an ability to care for others, others that have different needs and to be thoughtful about that. And, um, it kind of touched on that, but I feel like it is something that makes this school special, um, that's the way the kids treat each other, so. I don't know if it needs to be in there, but I just wanted to bring it up.
So, it could be prioritizing a culture of well-being and safety.
I, I know what you're saying. You guys, I mean, you have everything in there that I think we all support. But, but my challenge to you as the non-facilitator of this process is like, what's the, where's the heart? Like, we, we teach our kids to be kind or through, I don't know. I mean, I, I get exactly what you're saying, and I think that's what Liz is trying to.
So, so.
Because we do do these things, right? We do teach them that.
What if it was kindness and well-being? We have safety over here.
Yeah, maybe we can do kindness.
Yeah, I like it.
Prioritizing a culture of well-being and kindness for all students and staff.
We got kindness first.
Kindness first or second?
Kindness kind of rolls better than.
I think kindness first.
Kindness first.
Kindness should always be first.
Can we take all three? Can we do kindness, well-being, and safety?
I, I don't know. You've also got the social and emotional domains, but there's a lot there. I mean, I'm trying to see your, your brand new, brand new dad moves to the district and he brings this.
I would keep the first three in Liz's if we felt like it was. Some of the, how, how would we use different words to talk about social and emotional, um, maybe even, and you might probably discuss this, like, somewhere in there of a whole child where we know in the strategies we're gonna get this or we're gonna.
Yeah, we have the whole child.
Just the word holistic down.
We use the word holistic maybe instead of the different domains.
I know exactly what you mean.
Supports holistic development from pre-K to post-secondary?
You know, we could use, I know, it's kind of a place to say growth too, instead of individual development, we could say individual growth.
So, do we wanna go for individual growth or do we want to go for holistic growth? And then, we take away social and.
So, you could say something like supports the whole child from pre-K to post-secondary.
Yeah.
And get all that out there, okay? Supports the whole child from pre-K to post-secondary decisions?
Well, with that, though, we're ignoring the staff. We're gonna say that.
We'll set that up top.
If we give a staff up top, then.
But I think you.
Because the, the staff is not going from pre-K to post-secondary.
No, they're not. You're right. I think that needs to get changed as well. If we're gonna include all, you know, both elements in this particular statement.
I, maybe this is too specific, but I feel like as a parent, what's important to me, and I'm just one person, but, um, you know, social, emotional is kind of thrown around a lot and it's very broad, um, but I feel like what I value a lot about Yellow Springs is the, the teaching of like empathy skills and also, um, resiliency. Um, I feel like both of those are good factors in this school district, um, and I know that's pretty specific, but resiliency is a big, a big deal. And I think teaching that empathy is also a really big deal, because that's where the kindness really comes from.
Would that be a strategy? Would that be a goal?
I, I think it's just like, because when we're talking about social, instead of saying social, emotional domain, I think we could maybe be more like, you know, teaching the empathy and, or empathetic or resilient children, or that's kind of the goal, with kids that are empathetic and resilient.
So, what, does, if you say Yellow Springs Schools supports development of the whole child, that doesn't get at what we're talking about?
I think whole child is thrown around a lot too, so I don't know if we need to be super specific, but.
So, so here's, I'm gonna give you, give you a glimpse into what, what we're gonna do after this, like after the strategic plan, so then what we'll do is we will take this, and we will say, okay, now that this is our plan and, and we know these things, how are we gonna build this sort of portrait of a graduate or portrait of a learner that says step by step, here's how our children, um, grow in this way or, or kind of get these skills? So, I think that that, things like agency and resiliency and empathy, to me, those are things that we really wanna highlight in our portrait of a learner, our portrait of a graduate, and then we can tie it back to the strategic plan and say, hey, this is the goal.
Okay.
And, and, and the assort, you know, the correspondence.
So, again, it's gonna tie back to your core values.
Right.
And the way those core values are demonstrated, or the way the core values come to life, is through strategies within these five key goal areas.
I'm okay with revising, uh, of course, like, prior to the whole child from pre-K to post-secondary decisions.
I agree.
I think we can set that right.
Supports the whole child from pre-K to post-secondary decisions. Okay.
Well, can I, I'd, I like just one more, because I like what you're trying to say, so maybe to make it more of a general, I, I still like the idea of encompassing the student or the, the student and the staff population as one. So, empathy and resilience within the academ, or our academic environment as a general term, a general statement. And that kind of encompasses everybody, instead, instead of making it specific to the cho, to the student population at the bottom part and not really engaging the staff that's included at the top part. Because then it covers the emotional or in the, in the, the deep caring.
So, you're talking about instead of all this.
So, so that, so you know, supports, you know, or, or provides, you know, um, a, an envi, or, yeah, an environment of, you know, empathy and resilience for, within the academic environment. And I'm not sure how to plug in the middle part, but it kind of summarizes more of the feelings of what we're expecting to come out of the staff as well as the student experience within our school district. That's kind of.
Empathy and resilience from a staff.
Prioritize the culture.
Yeah.
Prioritizing a culture of kindness and well-being for all students and staff, supporting, um, the growth of empathy and resilience.
Within the academic community or something like that.
Yeah, I agree with you, like, oh, we have.
That's my.
You like this?
Yes, when they're looking at adding into those specific strategies, like.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's review all five of these on the big screen, Terry, if you can show. And see what they look like that way. Bold teaching and learning. Yellow Springs Schools are committed. I can't, is it are or is?
Yeah, yeah.
It's are. Are. Yellow Springs Schools are committed to expanding academic opportunities and strengthening and deepening the teaching and learning experience through PBL inquiry-based experiential.
Not exponential.
That'd be one exponential learning for them.
It was a great slip of the hat.
Experiential.
Ten times. By ten, yes, by ten.
And while we're doing this, I will just say, when the running meeting notes come out, as you read through them, if you wanna put your English teacher hat on or your, uh, Merriam-Webster hat on, just go ahead and let us know.
Well, our committed to is kind of a running job. You probably didn't meet that first hand.
Are committed to expanding academic opportunities.
What you say.
We did, we put the and in there.
And strengthening and deepening the teaching and learning experience through PBL inquiry-based experiment, experiential learning for each student to flourish on their chosen path beyond graduation.
I have one thought. Can we drop our committed to and just say Yellow Springs Schools expand, strengthen?
That's what I just said, yeah. I can just say that, yeah.
Yellow Springs Schools expands. Expands academic opportunities and strength, strengthens and deepens.
And deepens.
Or something like.
No. No. YSS Schools expands. Expands student opportunities. Strengthens, yeah.
That is what you said.
Expands.
Expands, it, it needs an S, expands. Mills Lawn, it needs an S.
Yes.
Yellow Springs Schools expands academic opportunities and strengthens.
And strengthens and deepens.
Yes.
So, strengthens with an S and deepens with an S. Deepens the teaching and learning experience through PBL inquiry-based experiential learning for each student to flourish on their chosen path beyond graduation.
And you can probably get rid of the comma after experience.
And learning through.
I'm wondering, do we want beyond graduation? Do we just want, because it, it seems like it's focusing on that.
Flourish on their chosen path, period.
Period, that's what I think, yeah. What now?
Taking off the words beyond graduation, their chosen path.
Yes.
Sort of insinuates wherever they go.
Yeah, there's something about it.
Okay, I think that's better. Okay, next one. School and community engagement. Through a culture of connection and collaboration, we foster inclusive engagement and community building that is accessible, relevant, and participatory. That's, that's good. I think they're all good, that one. That one, there was very little editing done on, so that, good job. Next one. Uh, facilities. Provide, actually, I think it should probably be provides or providing. Um, a safe, comfortable, and accessible learning environment that inspires current and future educational excellence.
These are goals, right?
This is your goal statement, yeah.
Shouldn't it be provide? I mean, it's a goal.
I think it, it should be provide.
Providing.
We need to do all of the things.
All of the things, yeah.
But it should be something, it should be written like it's something you're doing now. So, provide to me is something you're going to do. Providing or provides is something you're doing right now.
It's not a goal.
It, provide and provides are fine. They're only different based upon the noun. So, it's okay. They say the same thing. I provide, Yellow Springs Schools provides.
Right.
I don't think that's what we need to worry about and, and, and because it says the same thing. Provides is present tense.
Provides is present tense.
Right. Right.
For me, it's what, once we get these on paper, it's hard really to look at these this way and then say, because then you have to say, are we parallel, Judith is right, or do we have parallel construction?
The idea is to, the idea is to present something to you in the next few days that is in, you know, two-thirds of the way there, right? Okay, next one. Finances. Using district resources responsibly to support our mission and planning for a sustainable tomorrow.
I think it should be planned.
Using district resources responsibly to support our mission.
It should be uses, because we should do them all the same. Each statement should be this.
Yeah.
You know, the uses, the verb.
I guess Y S, S, uses.
Using district resources responsibly to support our mission for a sustain, for a sustainable tomorrow. And then it says educate the community for understanding. Oh, you took that out?
People don't care about educating.
Planning could go away.
Education about financing, it's good action.
Using district resources responsibly to support our mission, planning for a sustainable tomorrow.
Could we switch responsibly with strategically? Would that, uh, address the quotation that, um...
Strategically instead of responsibly, I like that.
I like that, yeah.
So that we stay away from the, the shadow that, that is casted by responsibly.
It also goes with support.
We need to add universal healthcare to this one too.
I, we should do. Uses district resources strategically to support our mission for a sustainable tomorrow. Three S's there, it's alliterative, alliterative.
I do have a question, because I feel like it's big, it's almost insinuating that our, our mission for a sustainable, like we have one mission for a sustainable tomorrow.
I, I was referring to what's the, what's our academic mission? I mean, it don't exist as a financial institution.
Planning for a sustainable tomorrow.
You could say our district mission.
Okay.
That's what, yeah.
But if we say our district mission for our...
Never saying district, never saying district twice in this sentence.
Well, then I would take it out in front of you in the first instance. Uses resources strategically to support our district's mission for a sustainable tomorrow.
No, but my point, my point is that, that's one means that our mission is for a sustainable tomorrow. So it either needs to be our mission, comma, for a sustainable tomorrow, or our mission and planning for a sustainable.
We have planning, yes. I agree, yes.
I like the, the planning.
A district possession or...
Shouldn't it be S?
Possess and plans.
I think it should be the district resources, not the district mission.
Um, so to, to get rid of the possession, you could just say...
Say district planning and mission, and I hear two people.
Use which spells, so it's maybe a little less...
So Yellow Springs Schools uses resources strategically to support the...
And do we, do those are...
Our, I think it's cleaner if we say the district's mission, so that we know it is, um, possessive there, the district's mission. And plans for... And plans for a sustainable tomorrow. Yes. Yes.
Why, eh, eh, this is a grammar question?
Yeah, it's...
Why? Why is planning incorrect? I understand the uses and not using.
So it's got to be parallel, yeah. If it's using, it's planning, if it's uses, it's plans.
Using and planning or uses and planning.
I agree.
English has second language here.
Okay.
English has second language here. Y S means Yellow Springs Schools cruel, right? So then, should it be uses or uses?
Oh, boy.
So Yellow Springs Schools uses. Yes.
Agrees with that.
Yes.
Okay.
But if you said the schools, then you say use, right?
All right, okay. I just want to say about your language, your language is very complicated.
No, you go back, you go back, it's a little bit of a huddle. You could say it's our district mission and our plan. You could use "our" there.
Okay, okay, I, I'm gonna throw my question.
Our plan means something.
All right, the last one. Deep caring. Prioritizing a culture of kindness and wellbeing for all students and staff. Yellow Springs Schools supports the whole child from pre-K to post-secondary.
This is, this is your...
But I do understand the concern of putting pre-K there, uh, because we do not have an on-campus pre-K. And I know that, I know that we are respons, every public school in Ohio is responsible for testing and making sure that three and up is served properly for those on I E Ps, but it's, it's complicated. If I read that, I would think that you guys had a, that we had a preschool program.
Well, this is a goal, right? We're talking about goals here.
And I think that right now, it's really important to kind of footstomp all the school does to support pre-K because then there's a great deal of...
I think our thought in adding pre-K was that there are pre-K services, even though they're through the Educational Service Center. But, and with the goal of expanding those, we need to, but I, I hear what you're saying. So if it's better to take it out from a...
I don't know.
Well, there's the same problem with post-secondary as there is with pre-K.
Okay.
We are not a post-secondary institution.
But we had, we, the original language is to post-secondary decisions.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't make much sense.
And I thought that was, sorry, what?
I was just gonna say, I, I don't, I, I don't care for how it's worded without decision at the end of it.
Yeah, I know. It's missing there, because we're not offering post-secondary, but we're guiding students until their decisions, right?
What if we, do we change it to readiness?
No, because some are ready before, some are ready, they're, they're ready at different.
The whole child from pre-K to post-secondary readiness?
No, no, readiness.
What if we flipped it?
From kindergarten, yeah, to post-secondary.
From kindergarten readiness to...
Why do we just have to put the grades on there?
Yes.
What, um...
Three. Post-secondary decision. Or why do we have to...
Wait, why do we have to put anything af, why don't, why do we have to put anything after child?
We don't.
I think that we put that specifically on there, because we have, same with like facilities, there were 23, so we titled that one facility. There were 20 dots on pre-K. So we know it's like a big priority for the community in general. So calling it out specifically in this statement to make sure any strategic, strategy we make around this always, like, that's a main focus for us, that we're protecting it. The way we're prioritizing it is best we can.
So if we put, if we keep, if it's the consensus of the group to keep pre-K, then we do from pre-K through grade 12. Because I think post-secondary, I, I understand post-secondary decisions, but we're supporting the whole child through grade 12, which means as they make their post-secondary decisions.
Instead of post-secondary, Terry.
I know, but I'm waiting.
Would you say graduation?
Graduation. Yeah, graduation.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to replace pre-K with early childhood because of...
I'm concerned.
Early childhood gets kind of funned out.
Actually, that's kind of cool, because graduation is not a, I mean, graduation is sort of a, I, I want to say it's kind of a stage, as is, what, what was the word you used?
Early childhood.
From early childhood through graduation?
Yeah.
I could be...
Here, here's, here's the, I like early childhood and here's why. We all know that there were 23 or however many, um, dots for pre-K. What I don't want us to have is a strategic plan that we can't actualize.
Or that it's heavily focused on one strategy.
Well, even that, I don't, it's not so much that, as if I have a strategic plan that says pre-K and I never am able to materialize a pre-K. But I, I can focus on early childhood, current early childhood that we have, the students that we have at, at the E S C preschool, and then it also allows for our pre-K, kind of like in the first one, where we were, where we said expanding academic opportunities implies pre-K.
And the, what I would say, not living in your community, when I look at supports the whole child from early childhood through graduation, to me, that is a more emotional and feeling kind of statement than pre-K for grade 12. You know, it, it seems more aligned to the other language that you've used so far.
So I, I want to say that we kind of lost in that, the discussion of inclusion and diversity. I mean, I guess, and we added two words that were taken out.
Well, we did include that in with school and community engagement.
But isn't it something that we want to reinforce through several goals?
Well, I thought that was in the card. Empathy and kindness.
And it says all students. I mean, I think there's, I think it's implied a few ways throughout all five statements, but...
I mean, we could, I, you know, it, it, it's not a bad thing to footstomp, but you can, empathy and kindness are two different things, so...
We could say kindness, comma, inclusion and wellbeing, or we could say kindness, comma, belonging and wellbeing.
I was making welcoming, putting welcome, welcoming there.
Yeah.
One word. Belonging, okay, belonging, yeah. Yeah, okay, that does, yeah.
That's a, that's a warm and fuzzy there. Culture, kindness, belonging, and wellbeing, I mean, there.
But the thing is, that message though covers all the way through the timeline of the student's time in the school.
Yes.
So I like it that it's more general versus...
And that's a really good word, because, you know, there, there's been people who study group learning, and they're finding that achievement starts happening when people start feeling...
Like they belong. Yep.
I, so Hank, hang on, one last.
Yeah, I have one more.
Megan is right, that we talk about staff in the first part, but the second part applies only to students.
We can say whole person.
Well, we've already gone from early childhood through graduation. So I, I think that's the part that's problematic in terms of mentioning the staff.
I think you can take, I think, I honestly feel like you can take the staff out or you can add an "and" at the end of that sentence.
Staff and supports the whole child?
No. At the end of graduation, and then say what you're, how are you going to support the staff?
Well, the other thing we could do is say, uh, belonging and wellbeing for all, period. So that kind of includes everybody, and then get rid of students who staff and then say Yellow Springs.
That's true, yeah.
The whole.
So we had that discussion earlier over here, and we, I mean, I know that we made the point at the table, but if we don't mention staff, they're kind of the invisible part of a goal sometimes, so... But I wanted to make sure that we noted, we, we get that, but if it doesn't, then...
Well, if you say for all as opposed to just saying for students, right?
Yeah, I would say for...
You know, for all, to me, includes staff.
Or, or if we want to be specific, maybe for the academic community, and that covers staff and students as a general label.
Well, we don't want to skip the staff, they're not...
No, it'd be academic community, it'd be the whole, members of the, of the academic community.
Actually, I, I, I wanted to throw this to the staff members here and see.
Could we say for all members of our learning community?
For our learning community.
Yeah.
If you want to be, you know, specific on who we're addressing.
You could say something like, like she said, for all within our school community, comma, supporting the whole child.
Could, could we not talk about the whole child as a strategy and, and be a little more, um, general and inclusive in the statement, and, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the title, this deep caring and this notion about deep caring. I, I don't have the words, but Yellow Springs promotes a culture of what? For everyone in our school community, period. And in the strategies, we support the whole child. Through this, we support including whatever, all of those things that, that you identified.
Yeah, we worked so hard on the second half.
That's where the...
Right, because those are the words.
So, so are we, should we bring this back, and should we bring, should we bring the culture of empathy, resilience?
I'm thinking those are, are really, i- if you say, we are, we emphasize caring about each other as humans, right? We believe in that, we believe in kindness and belonging and wellbeing for all members of the school community. Done. And then in the strategies, you can talk about, here's how, here's what that means for the child from early elementary or early childhood to...
So is, would it, could it start, again, Y S S prioritizes a culture of kindness, belonging, and wellbeing, and then your words about for all members of our school community, is that what you said?
Yep. Something like that. Yeah.
Y S S prioritizes, um, a culture of kindness, belonging, and wellbeing for all members of our school community.
Instead of with it, or...
I was just trying to get rid of the problems that we have with students and staff.
I think that, I think that addresses everybody.
I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that addresses everybody.
I, well, just, how do you, how do you feel about that?
We lost a lot of things here.
We lost a lot of words.
I mean, it's broad enough to encompass those things. I think, when I think back to the example, it was so specific about we recruit and train and like, it was like these very like specific things, so...
Yeah, I mean, truthfully, I mean...
But going, going...
Full learning is like, you're full teaching and learning, obviously, that's what a school does, but this is the other big thing that the school does.
And what I would say is, you look at all your critical issues that had to do with deep caring, and this says what it's going to look like when you accomplish strategies within that goal. Okay, you're going to have a chance, again, to throw arrows or whatever when you get your... So, um, that was, that was a heavy lift, but, you know, I've, I've said it before and I'll say it again, the goals are the biggest piece of the plan. The core values, the vision and mission, all of that is important, particularly as you move towards Portrait of a Graduate or something like that, but the goals, the work that's being done at the schools now and tomorrow and five years from now, is, is all going to be within these goal areas, so that's critical.
That's the wrong date.
Oh, it is?
It's May, May 8.
May 8.
May 8.
I'm gone, we have, I'm gone, Eli's gone, Jack's gone.
Okay, I don't know why I had that then. Maybe it was on early version. Oh, yeah, we changed it a long time ago.
May 8.
We did. Monday, May 8.
I'm a little worried about that, I'm so tired.
Okay, so our last meeting, we're going to just try and tie this into a bow, and then a lot of the stuff I've heard all night long about actual strategies, that's what we're going to do. We're going to brainstorm that. So thank you for being here tonight, and we'll see you Monday, May 8.
Okay. Terry, Rio?
Great work with you all.
Okay.
Good table, good job.
Tim Flink?
Good job, everybody.
Magnus? Amy? Jern? Jern? Jern. I have a zero word, Jern, we had 8:07.
He's timeless, I mean, I...